There will now be a transportation presentation for Mrs. Banco.
This evening, I'm here to talk to you about everybody's favorite subject, electric school buses. And although it seems like it might not be a topic for a board meeting, it has the potential to have a huge impact on all school districts. So this evening, I will talk about the current mandate, where it stands today, where Eden stands in the process. I'll give you a few tidbits of information and then time to answer questions. My presentation is strictly fact-based, where we are, where we're going. Currently, the mandate says that in 2027, all school buses purchased must be zero emissions. Currently, the only option for a zero emissions vehicle is electric. So beginning in 2027, we can no longer purchase diesel school buses if the mandate stays where it is. Then in 2035, all, the entire fleet needs to be converted to zero emissions. And even if we have a diesel bus still on the lot, we're not allowed to drive it anymore, if the mandate stays where it is. So where does Eden stand in the process of electrification so far? We applied for and received partial funding for a NYSERTA study, and the Wendell Agency is conducting that study for us. Over the summer, I provided a very, very, very detail-focused analysis or information that Wendell used. So everything from engine size to how long a bus is on the road before it picks up its first kid, how many kids are on the bus, how much time does it have in between bus routes to charge, anything you can think of, they asked for. And then Wendell took that information and they put together a written study or a written report, which we got last week, actually. So the timing was good. Twenty, we have about 25 bus routes, give or take, depending on out-of-district special needs at the moment. The big thing that came from the study is that of our 25 current bus routes, there are 13 bus routes where a battery does not exist big enough to handle that bus route. So Wendell's suggestion at the moment, obviously, is to start with the buses that we could replace and wait it out for those 13 bus routes and hope that the technology will advance enough that a battery will be available to power those routes. Of that 13 that there currently isn't a battery available for, there's one bus route that NYSERTA and Wendell both agree there will probably never be a battery big enough to handle. And if that is the case, I mean, you think about it, I see a couple eyebrows go up. We're in a really rural district. We travel a lot of miles and some of our bus runs only have about two hours in between. And that one particular route we talk about is for a very high-need student in a wheelchair. Has to have that type of bus. So if there's not enough downtime in between, that means that there will be two buses, one for the morning and one for the afternoon, unless they come up with a battery big enough to power it. Another part of the NYSERTA study is, was the site visit. So Wendell came out with a few representatives. They talked to Mrs. May, Mr. Sitzman and I. For a while, they looked at our buildings, they looked at our grounds, they looked at water supply. And some of the big takeaways from that, we won't have that actual report until January, but some big takeaways from that is that we will definitely need a fire suppression system inside of our building. We don't currently have one now. The maintenance bay where they work on the buses is too small for the battery buses. They're bigger, they're longer, they're taller. So there'll need to be some sort of revision either to the building or an add-on or something so the guys can actually work on the vehicles when we do get them. We'll need a water pumping station out by the road on School View, along with a few fire hydrants throughout the parking lot area. We'll get back to that in a moment. And the parking lot is currently too small, so we need to take up a little bit more footprint. The reason the parking lot is too small is that we're currently parked back-to-back. We can just walk in between our buses right now. Electric vehicles, electric school buses need to be parked a minimum of 10 feet from each other on all sides. So we have to spread out. And the reason that they have to park 10 feet away from each other is so if one of them catches fire, we can use our handy-dandy new fire hydrants to dump water on that bus and the surrounding buses in hopes that the fire won't spread to the rest of the vehicles. So a lot of challenges up ahead, but those are the realities of what they talked to us about that day. Then some other tidbits. Wendell, NYSERTA, and I all agree that we should consider purchasing extra school buses before that 2027 deadline. Right now, it's already hard to get diesel vehicles. There's a possibility that we might put in an order for extra full-size buses and not be able to get them anyway, but they recommend that we try because if the mandate stays as it is, 2027 is not very far down the road and we won't be able to purchase buses. Something we've done on our own already is to keep some of our spares that we would have sent off in trade for new vehicles. So if you look at our parking lot right now, it looks pretty full. That's because we kept buses that we would normally have accessed in anticipation of maybe not being able to get diesel vehicles shortly down the road. So some of them are kind of at the end of their lifespan. We have a really fantastic mechanic crew that keeps the buses maintained, so they're doing their best to keep them in operating order longer than we normally would have, just in case. To give you an idea of an electric vehicle cost, actually, one of the Leonard reps is here this evening, he happens to be a bus driver for us also. There's a bunch of manufacturers out there that do electrical vehicles, but a ballpark estimate for a full-size school bus is between $440,000 and $500,000 per bus. Per bus. There is some funding available out there, but most of it is in the form of reimbursements. So the district needs to incur debt, pay upfront, and then be reimbursed. And on a positive note, National Grid currently feels that they have the capacity to power our buses. So that's, that's a positive note. So that's where we stand today, if nothing changes with the mandate, and where Eden stands in the process. And I kind of wanted to open it up because I'm sure there's some questions about the process.
Mary, what's the, what's the standard diesel cost of a bus right now?
About $135,000.
And we're buying, what, about six or eight a year?
No, we, no, we usually, we usually buy two or three, sometimes four. It depends on if we need large or small vehicles. So like this past fiscal year, or this current fiscal year, we ordered one large, one large diesel and four small, we call them vans, because the small buses were almost impossible to get, so we grabbed some that were available.
So in other words, we'll be able to buy one electric bus a year?
Uh huh.
On the current budget?
Right, on the current budget, correct.
And National Grid, this contract, I've had some conversations on industrial side and they said they can't handle it. The industrial people say they can't handle this, this coming towards them right now. So I, I don't know, it's, it's two different schools of thought, but the industrial side is saying there, there's no way that they can handle putting that many electrical buses on the grid.
Right, and I think Mr. Sitzman can probably speak better because I got this information from him, but this was before we did the NYSERTA study, that they came in and said that at current capacity, they should be okay, for us.
Should be.
This is before everybody, this is like them to us, we could do it for you, but when everybody else is on, who knows? Right? Okay.
Can I ask, I have two quick questions. Maybe you can't answer these, Mary, I don't know. First of all, back when the electric buses conversation started, there was some concern that whatever the busing companies were, wouldn't be able to manufacture them fast enough to keep up with the demand.
So that's still a concern now. Right now, there are about 15,000 school buses on the road in New York, and they're producing about 3,000 a year, give or take, between all of the manufacturers. So if they quit producing diesel and everybody switches to electric, I would anticipate that the manufacturer rate will go up enough to supply. But right now, there aren't that many electric buses out there. There were, I think, 67 school districts on this side of New York that put electric, electrification up for a budget vote, and a handful of them passed. So even if the vehicles are available, the fact that the district has to incur debt and needs to go out for voter approval, I don't know how that'll play out because what if, you know, what if the buses are available, but the district voters say, no, we're not doing it? So those are all, there's a lot of questions out there still about this.
And my second question is, and I'm not expecting you to answer this, it's more, I'm just putting it out there. How frequently do these buses catch fire that they need to be parked 10 feet apart? Like that is the manufacturer recommendation, like, and do we, should we be concerned that they're going to catch fire when they're not parked and running kids around?
And I can't, I don't have a factual answer to that. It, I don't even, I don't even want to speculate.
Like I said, I didn't think, I'm just more so putting it out there for, I guess, food for thought.
They did say that the point of the, the fire hydrants was to keep as much water on the burning bus as possible to keep it from extending to the rest of the fleet.
Again, that's concerning to me.
How many?
I guess shouldn't we be concerned that, I don't know, have we ever talked about diesel buses just randomly starting on fire in the parking lot?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And I understand, I get it, but do, like, it's the trickle-down of this whole situation. Like, is it really, Mary, you're just, I'm not blaming you, I'm more so frustrated with the whole situation.
If we're moving beyond the facts, there's a lot out there that's, that's still up in the air and still unknown. I mean, if you just think about the cost factor, it's not just the buses themselves, it's the infrastructure that we need, potentially a new wing to the building or a new building, the fire hydrants, the pumping station, everything that we need. The cost is crippling. It's going to bankrupt school districts.
A hybrid bus is acceptable because a lot of these can't even make a full run without, without having, at the end, having no energy, no ability to do it.
This all comes down to the current mandate by the governor.
I think maybe we should look for others to start irrigation. I really find it like impossible.
I think when the reality of it all comes out, like, part of the NYSERTA study, that one bus that they feel will never have a battery, they're reporting that back to the state. Because I think when those types of realities are presented to the state and they can see that there are situations where it's just not feasible, I think we'll see a change to the mandate, but right now, this is where we're at today.
So Mary, along those lines, if 50% of our buses couldn't handle batteries currently up in Watertown or up, up in the Adirondacks, it, the number must be 80, 90%. Have you been on conference calls or conversations with any of those? I mean, we're rural, but we're not rural like Watertown.
Right, and so Wendell brought that up during the conversation, that there are some school districts out there that have zero routes they can power with the current electric batteries.
And secondly, have, did Wendell consider the heats, heat, so in other words, in cold temperatures, the, the, the life of the battery versus, you know, 65 degrees and partly cloudy?
Yeah, so they looked at ideal conditions, they did take into account the, the obvious cold temperatures around here. One of the things that we didn't talk about in the route study, but that I expect to come out in the site analysis, is the fact that they either need to be parked indoors or they need some sort of fencing around them. Because the snow blowing on them, the wind, all of those things make it harder for it to charge. So that'll all come through the site analysis. Right.
How many of them can make a full run? I think a lot of them can't make a full run.
About half of them could do a full run right now.
Just only half.
About half.
This is a ridiculous position that the state is taking. I think it would be good if people could get together and, I think that would just be some kind of.
I agree.
So to recap, 2027 is the last year we can purchase diesel buses?
It's the last year we can purchase a diesel bus, yes.
And by 2035, the entire fleet is supposed to be zero admission?
Currently, yes.
Right. We know that there is, based on our conversation earlier today, a solid year and a half to two years before we can get delivery of a diesel right now?
We have the bus that we put the letter of intent in for in March and then got voter approval, so it's one large school bus. In this current fiscal year, I was told yesterday that the production isn't expected to start until January of 2026. So that's another part of the puzzle. If, if we do try to get a few more buses, I don't know yet if we'll still be allowed to take those, or if the mandate will say, well, it's 2027 now, so you can forget all those buses that you had ordered anyways. That's still very much unknown right now.
Okay. And in our, in our model here, in our fiscal model here, we ask our voters for approval to utilize our transportation reserve to purchase buses. And, and, you know, I don't see that changing in, in any, anytime, anytime soon. Just want to throw that out there. Significant infrastructure needs, you know, I think you outlined probably the least level of infrastructure needed, just extending the bay. We didn't talk about charging stations, we didn't, you know, you mentioned needing more space. We do have space in that area, but you can't just pave over grass, right? That's pretty significant in, in what you have to do in terms of examining the, the infrastructure of the field next to the current transportation department. So an awful lot that we need to happen. I think as a board, and I would say probably a component of our community, is dubious on whether we can really make this happen or not. Right? And that's why we're not first. And we may not be second, we may be last to, to figure all of this out, because I think time will be on our side. Mr. Cuddy brings up excellent points that we've talked about in my circles, that while we have 13 of 25, just over 50% of our runs can't, can't, can't be completed right now. As you pointed out, there's districts that can't even come close to that. So let's be patient. I will tell you that the Superintendent's Association is advocating vigorously against the timelines first, because that seems to be our best avenue of pause. Going against, going completely against the mandate probably isn't going to get us traction right now, but maybe we just need a little bit more time to sort this out, so. So that's a lithium battery that we heard a little bit earlier, and I'm going to remind you to turn on your microphone if you're going to talk, okay? Because we're being recorded. Did you hear me? Alan? On the microphone, right there. So you asked about the risk of fire, and that comes from, from the lithium battery, and, and, you know, that is a concern, of course. So did you have any other questions, Alan?
You need all this water and they'll, they gotta be parked 10 feet away to hopefully make it a less risk of a fire? I mean, these positions are, are, in my opinion, untenable. I've litigated stuff that, that had less problems and, and you could, this is just, I don't know where they came up with this, but it's pretty, I think it's completely distasteful.
And Eden's doing its part to, to maintain all of the milestones because, Mrs. May, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have to meet certain milestones if we want our state aid to continue coming in. So we're doing our part to make sure that we're, we're fulfilling what we're, we're required to do in order to keep getting our state aid and be prepared if we have to move forward.
Go ahead, Cheryl.
No, I just think, I remember we talked about this a few months when, or so ago, when it was in the wind. And I will always remember what Jeff said, that, you know, you don't want to be a pioneer in this. So I think considering all the school districts in New York and all the ones that would have zero ability of their buses, right, or of an electric bus to do it, I think it is good that we sit, we wait, we see how time does work to our advantage and stuff. And that's just my opinion. I mean, it is crazy to think, you know, what if a district can't afford that? And if voters voted down, you can't really blame them. So I just think that's a great idea.
Mary, can you, maybe you can answer this question for me? How were these buses heated? Is the battery the heat source, or is there?
Is it okay to let Cody answer that?
Absolutely.
He knows that.
I just want, I just want clarification. I've heard two different things.
So this, this is Cody Shamrock. He's a Leonard bus.
So I'm not actually working, but somehow I'm working now, so. So heating is across all manufacturers, pretty much the same. They use essentially what we call a heat pump. So there's a cooling system in the bus that contains coolant. There's a heating element inside of that that is high voltage, and then that is what circulates that heating through the cabin. So you.
So it's the battery that's.
Correct.
So it's not, it's not like an external combustible source that's heating it?
No, the high-voltage battery powers the pump, which then heats the cabin. So it's a pretty straightforward system.
Yeah, it's going to draw battery power.
That's where your range reduction comes in, but I'm going to.
While we have the bus guy here, has, have you ever heard them talk about hydrogen as, as a power source?
Okay, now I'm really in for it. So I was at the bus plant yesterday in Tulsa, Oklahoma, actually, and hydrogen came up. Not even a remote possibility anywhere on the roadmap for school bus. It's not feasible for the operating style of a school bus for hydrogen to work. They're starting to look at it in truck, and even there, they're not, not real sure. To the hybrid comment, we had hybrids about 15 years ago, and that didn't go well. Many manufacturers did, they did it, they failed, and that's not an option going forward either.
So, so again, for Cody, if, if your manufacturer moves away from making diesel because of these mandates, of course, it's only in New York, right? So every, you can sell them in every other state?
So the manufacturers are being given guidelines as well that they have to follow. So for example, next year, there's an act that's being adopted in New York State where anything the manufacturer sells through their dealer, 11% of those sales have to be electric. So as a dealer group, next year, we have to sell 68 electric buses in order to sell our six or 700 diesels. So basically, one electric unlocks eight diesels, and that's a mandate on the manufacturer.
And so the real challenge becomes, so even if the state pushes this, kicks this can down the road, the manufacturers aren't, aren't making as many diesels as they used to.
And it depends if they're a CARB state, California or Air Resources Board, you can sign on to be part of the CARB group, and some states will adopt that, meaning they have these kind of standards. You have other states that have said, we don't want anything to do with it. So the manufacturers will still produce. One statistic I learned yesterday, because we talk about production, is it takes about eight hours to outfit a chassis on an electric school bus, whereas a diesel, every station takes about eight minutes. So we send a diesel bus out the door every eight minutes, and they're doing about 65 a day, and they're about, able to do about four or five electrics a day right now, as it is. As you take away several hundred diesels, of course, that frees up capacity, but you still have that eight-hour timeframe that you're dealing with. Thank you. I didn't want to hijack this, but I'm here.
So Mary, last question. When will the Wendell study be completed? Do you know?
The route analysis is done. The site study should be given to us sometime in January. I don't honestly know if there's a step beyond that yet.
Okay. Okay, and then, so though, hopefully there'll be a meeting with, with those folks.
Yeah.
Right? And then we'll, we'll join, obviously, right? So excellent presentation.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation of athletics, EOS report, Mr. Iwanko.
Good, all right. Good evening, members of the school board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present an overview of our fall athletic program. Your commitment to our programs plays a crucial role in shaping the experience for our student athletes. To begin today's presentation, a short, brief, like, 20-minute slideshow highlighting our athletes. Joke, joke. It's one, it's one. See, it wasn't 20, wasn't 20 minutes. All right, this fall was an exciting and productive season for our athletic department. During this year, during the year, we offer 55 sports across the various levels. Nearly half of those compete in the fall, so the falls are our busiest season going forward. Enrollment-wise, you know, one of my ongoing goals is to increase student participation in athletics. This season, we saw a noticeable increase with approximately 63% of our students involved in a sport. As winter sports include JV varsity modified wrestling, they started on Monday. We begin this week, we're encouraged by our numbers. We beat our numbers last year already with the 30% with, based on enrollment. So kids are playing, but I always want to get that higher. This fall, I am proud to share that every varsity team, for the first time I, since I've been here, every varsity team had a over 90 average, so they were scholar-athlete teams. To be a scholar-athlete in New York State, 75% of the members have to have a 90 or above average. So as you can see, we crushed it this year. Overall, the GPA for all 12 varsity teams was about 94%, which was much higher than last year, and last year were about like 91. So kudos to our student athletes that are doing great on and off the fields. So appreciate that. Also, we had over 118 student athletes, senior student athletes, received 90 or above averages as well. Some noteworthy accomplishments for the season included girls cross-country, they were division four league champions. Same thing with our girls and boys volleyball team. Mia Scott took third place in diving in the Class C meet, and our game-day cheer, cheerleading team were also ECIC champs this fall. Additionally, our field hockey team advanced to the section six Class C finals, competing in a hard-fought match against Akron and narrowly falling 3-2. They were the last seeded team in the class. They play in a hard division in ECICs, and it's a testament to their coach and their players, they battled strong throughout the whole year. Akron all year gave up two goals, and we were actually winning 2-1 going into the fourth quarter at the end. Had a chance to win in overtime, but it just didn't fall right, so we ended up losing 3-2, but kudos to those girls, and everybody returns next year. So I know Coach Michele does a great job with that team, so I was really happy about that. Our boys cross-country teams also had a strong finish at sectionals, placing third in the Class C, too. And the girls earned fifth place overall, and the guys earned sixth place overall. Testament to Coach Milson and that team, considering East Aurora is in our class as well, and they're actually, we're state champs for the boys and girls, so that's kudos to our team there. We also had over 30 athletes recognized as first team, second team, or third team All-Stars in the respectable leagues. These achievements are a testament to the dedication and hard work of everyone involved in our athletic department. I would like to take a moment to thank our student athletes, coaches, game-day supervisors, maintenance staff, technology team, transportation department, our athletic trainer, my athletic secretary, their collective efforts make our success possible, and I'm proud to work alongside them each and every day. At this time, I'd like to introduce two outstanding senior student athletes. I know you're nervous, it's okay. Hannah Pino and Brady Mason, who will share their experiences and reflection on what Eden Athletics means to them. Who will share their experiences and reflection on what Eden Athletics means to them.
Hello, I'm Hannah Pino. I've been running track in cross country for four years and I'm going to talk about how it has positively affected my life. Um, Olympic marathon runner Dina Castor once said, being part of a team means pushing yourself, not just for your own goals, but for the success of everyone. The lessons we learn from supporting each other through set packs and victories translate to every part of life. A lot of people ask me why I run and my answer used to always be, so I can eat all the cake I want. But the truth is, I do it because of the positive experiences I've had through running on a team. Being part of a team at Eden has given me a second family. Running is hard. I learned that quickly on my first day of practice. But it's a lot easier with someone running beside you. Knowing that we are facing similar challenges has brought us all together and fortified many strong relationships on the team. I have met and gotten closer to many of my best friends through track and cross country. They have pushed me to become a stronger athlete and a more resilient person. I also learned a lot about leadership throughout, through the role models I've been introduced, introduced to from these sports. My cross country coach in particular has shown me the importance of hard work and dedication. He motivated our team through his example, running with us at every practice and participating in every workout. Being on a sports team has also benefited my mental and physical health. Joining the cross country team was the start of my love for running and has made me prioritize my health and take care of myself more in a society where we sometimes feel too busy to do so. Sports have positively, positively benefited my mental health by giving me an outlet that has helped me reduce anxiety. I'm able to channel my adrenaline from stress into my workouts and clear my head during a run. Running for Eden has also taught me a lot about overcoming challenges and moving on from failure. Whether those challenges were running, having to run up a hill that felt like Mount Everest or a brittle track workout in ninety-degree heat, they forced me to dig deep and push myself further than I thought was ever capable, I was ever capable of. I have been able to relate this to other aspects of my life when faced with difficult situations that I need to overcome. It has also taught me how to both set high expectations for myself and not be discouraged by failure. I've had painful runs where I stopped and walked, races where I didn't get my desired time, and track workouts where I didn't meet my splits. I have had to learn to not be discouraged by these failures, keep moving ahead and keep putting forth my best effort and understand that progress is not linear. This has turned me into a more positive person by seeing opportunity and growth out of discouraging situations inside and outside of practice. Overall, Eden Athletics has benefited me and many other students at Eden High School by providing a space for student athletes to make new friends and learn about leadership, resilience, and teamwork from both their coaches and their teammates.
Hannah, can I ask you, Hannah, can I ask you a quick question? So is Mr. Iwanko, um, run with the cross country team? I'm just, I'm just curious, because I know he's gone with other sports and practiced with. I'm just curious if he's.
He has actually.
Okay, thank you. I just, I want, I want to see when he's going out to do football.
There's, there's a few occasions where the cross country team runs by my house. I'm at the dead end of Hillbrook and I try to tell Milson to let me know and I'll spray a hose on you and it's like ninety degrees out or something.
They come up by my house too, down the dirt road on Weepex? Yeah. Gets the dogs all riled up then?
I don't know how this mic works. Can you hear me? All right. Uh, hello, everyone. My name is Brady Mason. I'm currently in my senior year and I've been a three-sport athlete since seventh grade. Throughout these years, I've participated in soccer, volleyball, basketball, baseball, and lacrosse. With navigating my passions, I've consistently played volleyball, basketball, and lacrosse for the past five years while also being a scholar athlete. I am very honored that Mr. Iwanko has invited me here to speak today about the importance of high school sports and what they can do for young individuals. High school sports play a crucial role in students' lives, offering more than just physical activity. They teach very valuable life skills such as teamwork, positive attitudes, and time management. As students participate in high school sports, they very quickly learn about teamwork, which is how to effectively collaborate with others. This involves clear communication, respective ideas, and trust. No matter what sport you play, there is always some sort of game plan that you must try to follow, whether it is a play or even a overall mindset as a team. Even as little of, we are the best team, so we will win this game. To stay on this game plan, you will need to have trust in your teammates to follow the plan and communicate effectively if something needs to be changed. If this is the case, a bunch of individuals have different ideas on how to tweak and add changes to the plan, leading into respecting others and their point of views. With this life skill, you will recognize when to put others' needs above your own desires, whether it is in a sports game or even in a work setting with multiple people. As mentioned, high school sports also play a role in teaching students how to maintain a positive attitude. In sports, all athletes will face many challenges head on. It can be facing a tough opposing team, battling an injury, or even some losses can be very devastating. Learning how to stay positive in these situations is the golden key for personal growth and success. With a positive attitude, athletes are more likely to stay focused and motivated to reach their own personal goals. It also allows them to realize that mistakes and setbacks are an opportunity to learn how to grow stronger. From my own experience, there was times during lacrosse when I wouldn't perform my best and I would embed into my head that I was not good at all. This brain-eating thought became so strong that I almost quit my junior season. However, one of my best buddies who graduated last year, Colin Hornquist, told me to keep my head up and to focus on the good. Just this little motivation put me in a positive mindset. I came to the belief that just because I'm not the best player on either side of the field, doesn't mean I can't contribute to my own team's success. While working on this mindset, I found a special quote from Vince Lombardi, which states, perfection is not attainable, but if we chase perfection, we can catch excellence. This really hit home and will always be a saying that sticks deep within my heart. From then on, I strive to work harder and harder, no matter who had a better skill set than me. After a while, I was complimented many times by my coach, Mr. Archibald, on how I really mean a lot to the team and our successes. Even though this is only one small personal example of how a positive attitude changed my life, I hope it has a big impact on how you perceive how easy it is to change another one's life. Now on to the final point. High school sports teach students time management and it starts at a pretty young age. This is probably the most valuable skill that sports can teach you due to it being a huge factor later, later on in everyone's life. With a full-time job, house management, and taking care of a family, being an adult requires heavy time management. As time management in high school isn't quite as stressful, it is a difficult quality to learn and obtain. One can go from a seven-hour school day to a long and intensive practice and then possibly even to a part-time job. In addition to all of that, there is at least an hour or more worth of homework on some nights. While some of you may get a good chuckle at the fact that I believe high school is very stressful, as there are so many more stressors in the adult world. Us athletes are slowly navigating our way through life and embracing all the opportunities that are given to us through the athletic world to become the even individuals we strive to be. Athletics give, athletics give one a sense of strong community and allows for them to learn who they are along the way. There may only be one student standing here tonight, however, I believe that all of my students and fellow athletes would agree with, with what I have stated tonight and possibly have further experiences to stress the important, importance of athletics within the high school community. Thank you to everyone sitting here tonight and allowing for me to open up about the great impact athletics has had on my own life and why I believe sports are important to our growing youth.
Like overall, I think it's important. Everyone here knows how much I love athletics and I could talk, talk, talk and talk and talk about it. But I think it's important that you hear it from the students who are there each and every day grinding with their coaches. I also want to thank both of your coaches for nominating you guys. You guys represent Eden very well. So I just want to thank you both for coming and doing this tonight. Thank you. Um, as we transition into the winter season, I want to assure members of the board and, and school community that I will continue to lead with determination and grit to develop responsible students who embody sound morals and a commitment to the Eden community. Once again, thank you for your unwavering support. Your leadership and dedication are vital to our success. And we are grateful for the opportunity to work with such a forward-thinking school board. Thank you.
Mr. Iwanko, could you upload that presentation to board docs? Just send it to Barb.
Got it.
Thanks.
Yes, there's no, he can't, but we will get it done. Hey, great job, both of you. Thank you for being here tonight and sharing your words. It, um, you, you may not, you may not realize how much it means to us that you came tonight to share what this experience is, is meant to you. Um, but I can tell you that this group up here works diligently on your behalf and on your, on your fellow students' behalf. And, and to hear the way you were both able to speak so eloquently and semi-professionally, quite frankly, um, is, is really heartwarming to me. So thank you both for everything.
So have you both taken Mr. Archibald's public speaking class or no?
No, they're teaching it next semester.
Oh, okay. Well, I would have thought you've already taken the class. Well done.
Are there any requests to withdraw specific items from the consent agenda? Approval of consent agenda items. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, consensus items be approved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Approximate position and time that the board of, has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements then respond appropriately to a few, at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status. For example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two-minute limit. Anybody? All right.
We gotta withdraw, eh?
What happened to that? That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Superintendent Secretary District Clerk Barbara Tomasulo be accepted effective January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Tomasulo for her twenty-four and a half years of service to the district.
Second.
All right, any discussion here? Please drag this out for a couple of months.
I got a few things to say. This was against my recommendation. It's my recommendation under duress and with sadness. I'm going to save my words till another meeting.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed?
You're not allowed to vote.
Any abstaining? Motion carried. Congratulations on the middle of your resignation.
Which she put in my birthday card, just so you know. Happy birthday, goodbye.
That upon the rec, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of math teacher Paula Farrell be accepted effective July first, twenty-twenty-five. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Farrell for her twenty-five years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? Lot of, lot of years walking out the door here. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of claims auditor Kendall Bernardi be accepted effective November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Bernardi for her year of service.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing the probationary period, Kenneth Jack be permanently appointed as a cleaner effective December twelfth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Gene Zidell be provisionally appointed as a clerk typist effective November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Salary is based upon CSCA contract level five, step three dash four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Annette Rydzenski be appointed as claims auditor effective November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Miles Coleman be appointed as a substitute microcomputer repair technician, replacing Darren Ezrella from December twelfth, twenty-twenty-four through approximately January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Note, Mr. Coleman is a current substitute in the district and was appointed as a summer tech cleaner in June.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Rita Stir, head election inspector, Virginia Gunther, Anne Sheehan, Ellen Kindley, and Barbara Caffrey be appointed as election inspectors for the Capitol Project Vote December seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four at a rate of sixteen dollars per hour. And future authorize the clerk, the district clerk to fill any vacancies in these positions, which may occur prior to December seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four with individuals from the Board of Elections Inspector Personnel List.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, clerk typist Laura Sweet be appointed out of title to the position of senior clerk typist until the return of senior clerk typist Brenda Burksdollar. Mrs. Sweet will be paid at the rate of twenty-four ninety-five or ninety-four, twenty-four dollars and ninety-four cents from October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four through December fifth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the rate of pay for the position of claims auditor for Kendall Bernardi be increased from seventeen dollars and fifty-four per hour to eighteen dollars and two cents per hour. Retroactive to September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Laura Gregory, Director of Educational Services and Data Protection Officer, be authorized to sign all data protection agreements.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following items be declared accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate. Do I need to read all those numbers and everything?
Eh, list one through eighteen's.
Do you need to read all those numbers?
Yeah, do I?
No. Just say as listed.
All right. Uh, number one, Little Wonder Debris Blower. Number two.
Just say as listed.
As listed, one through eighteen.
There you go.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
I was looking forward to saying all those. As you can tell, my voice is handling it so well. Um, now we have the business report.
All right, so just a couple of things to talk about tonight. Um, so we are currently in the process of hiring a payroll clerk. Uh, right now, the business office does utilize the BOSI service through the CBO of Erie Two BOSIs to assist with our payroll, uh, processing and completion. Uh, we did have a payroll clerk in-house, um, a few years ago, who had about thirty years of experience in that role. Um, and when she had retired, there weren't a lot of qualified candidates to replace her. Um, so we are circling back and looking, um, to bring that position back in-house. We greatly appreciate, um, Erie Two BOSIs assistance with payroll, but we are fortunate um, that we did have a lot of candidates apply for this position. Um, so we did have twenty-four candidates apply between the civil service list as well as external candidates. Uh, we are currently working through interviews and, uh, we are confident that we do have a couple of highly qualified individuals and we're looking, we're excited to bring someone new onboard. Um, school taxes. So I know last meeting, we had discussed, um, the school tax, um, collections and we were at about eighty-one percent received at that point. Uh, happy to report that as of today, we are up to ninety-seven point seven percent of total taxes collected. Um, just a reminder, if I'm not sure if all of you are aware, but, um, in December, the town does turn over that tax collection to Erie County. Um, and then they do remit payment for any principal, um, school tax bills that are outstanding at that point to the district. So essentially, the district is made whole and then the county will continue tax collection, um, and keep any interest and penalties at that point. Um, and then lastly, school lunches. So a little bit of an update on, um, the community eligibility provision. Um, so if you're familiar with the community eligibility, that means that students receive a free lunch and a free breakfast each day. Did have a pretty large increase in participation in both breakfast and lunch district-wide, which is really great to see. Um, so if we look at September, uh, breakfast increased a hundred and eighty-six percent. Uh, lunch increased fifty-three percent. So that's comparing September of twenty-twenty-four to September of twenty-twenty-three. Um, similarly, October, we had a hundred and sixty-five percent increase on breakfast and a fifty-two percent increase on lunch. So again, that's comparing October twenty twenty four to October of twenty twenty three, um, which is really great to see that that increase in breakfast especially, since we know studies do show that um, students that do eat breakfast in the morning have better academic performance. Um, similarly to uh the community eligibility, working with personal touch to include healthier options district-wide. Um, so they did introduce smoothies across the district for the secondary level as well as the elementary building, which have been a huge success. So students can now take a smoothie, which counts as a breakfast meal, free of charge. Um, and then we are also introducing um to be coming soon to the middle school and high school, a salad bar uh for both our students and our staff to enjoy. Um, and then lastly, we did um ask our principals to solicit solicit um information from our students and feedback from them on meals that they do like, things that they're seeing, that they would like to see in the um food service program. And we're hopeful that we can try and attract even more participation going forward. So any questions for me?
Frankie getting it done with the smoothie bar.
Have you had smoothies here? Do we have them up here yet? I know we have them at the elementary building.
I think it is here.
They're like the pre-made ones that they are like, okay.
You had it? Is it good? Well, come on.
Try them and report back.
Yeah. Well, I just, I know. Thank you for getting additional options and different options. I think that was my older daughter's biggest complaint was that, I mean, quote unquote, the food was disgusting. You know, um, it it just, it was the same things over and over and over again. And if if it's not appealing to you, you're never going to use it. So I think it's great that we're trying healthier options for the kids too. Um, hopefully less, I mean, we're all seeing the detriments of processed food, so I think the salad bar is a great idea.
Well, based on, based on the reaction we got from from the students in the in the audience, I think it was a great idea.
Yeah, it's awesome.
But they're, they want it tomorrow.
Oh, God.
This is, this is happening. This is happening.
I I did have a question that was, came from a a family member um with a a female student that wanted a lunch, but just wanted to purchase milk. And she was of the conception that she had a, she could take a whole meal, but she couldn't just purchase milk. Is that accurate?
I think they, I don't think they have to take the whole meal. I think they can just take the milk. Um, but let me check on that and I'll get back to you for sure.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
What else? When do you, when do you uh anticipate being complete with the payroll clerk interviews?
So we are done with interviews tomorrow and we're hopeful we'll have a candidate selected uh by the end of the week.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Next, we have the superintendent's report.
All right, while sticking with the uh healthy food options, um, I'm happy to share that our Future Farmers of America Club at the middle and high school is partnering or working on partnering with the Eden Community Garden Club to utilize our our greenhouse uh to grow uh produce. I think we're gonna start with lettuce to then be donated to the Eden North Collins Food Bank. So thank you to Gary I for reaching out and seeing if that was a possibility. And thank you to Matt Saramac, who jumped on that uh that opportunity pretty quickly. So more to come there.
This greenhouse is out back?
This greenhouse out back. The one that's got, currently has a Jeep parked in it that apparently we're gonna have to move that Jeep out of there.
I just, I just know it's been utilized for other things other than growing over the years.
Well, maybe we'll discuss that after the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Um.
More storage than anything.
Well, that's why I just said there's a Jeep in it right now.
It was a wood storage for a while and.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I know it certainly utilized in the spring um to support the planters that you see around town. So it's functional.
Good.
So, great. Uh, the next thing I'm I'm very happy to share with you is this very space that we're sitting in was awarded a first-place prize by the American Society of Interior Designers. This is a plaque that we that Young and Right received. Pretty cool, right? Um, and it was, the judging was based on design, aesthetics, functionality, creativity, and sustainability. And this is the second award that we've received. It's the first first-place award we we've received. You've heard me talk about this space is the um, I'm forgetting the phrase that I used, but I'll put, I'll make it more simple. It's the best spot in the district, right? And you know, the the board had the vision to to include it in a previous Capitol Project. And then the the larger design team, which included, you know, a lot of constituents uh came up with this space and I and I just love it. And I, you know, I think this, I can tell you that what the the, I believe, and I won't speak for them, but I speak for the number of students I see in this space on a regular basis now, uh it it's the go-to place and that makes me very happy. Um, so congratulations. The next piece I have, uh, a very good segue, is I want to talk a little bit about our upcoming Capitol Project Vote. Uh, as the board is aware, on December seventeenth, from nine in the morning to nine P M., we will ask our our stakeholders to vote for a two-proposition Capitol Improvement Project. Proposition number one is a no tax impact project. It includes roof replacements at the Eden Elementary Building. It includes parking lot replacements and door replacements, some ventilation updates and pre-K classroom renovations at GLP. It also includes a roof replacement in this building and parking lots and sidewalk replacement here as well. That is the maintenance component of the Maintenance and Modernization Project. Proposition number two, just uh ten point seven million dollars. It does have about a one point nine six percent tax impact, which equates to about fifty-five dollars per hundred thousand dollars of assessed value um for a seven-year period. That includes continuation of the renovations at the Eden Elementary Classrooms, which have been so well-received. Continuing continuing to replace some sidewalks in that area. Uh, upgrades and improvements to the odd foyer, which is a a a space that's utilized pretty frequently around here. And some additional improvements to the auditorium uh space as well. Uh, included in in the proposition number two is reinventing the main office and guidance uh spaces to modernize them. Um, again, some more sidewalks, looking at upgrading uh the baseball uh scoreboard and also select A C upgrades throughout the district as we uh move towards having to uh do heat mitigation in certain parts of our district. So that uh vote again is December seventeenth. My plan is to uh meet with our faculty on December second for the middle and high school faculty to present this project and GLP and Eden Elementary Faculty on December eleventh, December twelfth, there's a public uh meeting in this space that um, you know, anyone is welcome to attend. We'll continue talking about the project. Um, I I anticipate that we'll be putting some some uh information out on social media, um, whether it's a Facebook video and and or whatnot, and to make sure that our community knows as much about this project as possible. Any questions for me on either of those topics?
Uh, we have a meeting Tuesday, nine A M. for Capitol Project.
Yes, we do.
Jack, I don't know if you can make it. Um, but it's kind of a fan final dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's for for the vote. Um, kind of just doubling back as this whole electric bus thing kind of comes out. We probably need to rethink if we got the right parking lots for the bus loops again now, because these buses weigh more.
Well.
It's just something else that just continues to compound.
Okay, I know a lot about parking lots more than I ever thought I would know in my life. Um, those are, if, I'm not using the right phrase. The loops are heavy-duty, are the heaviest-duty uh parking lots that that we can have because of the the weight of the buses. Now, if there's a new standard because of electric buses, you're gonna see uh the um see that part of the industry, the parking lot industry, really, really go through the roof. So, yeah, there's a lot of issues with that for sure. Any other questions for me before my last comment? Hey, this is our last meeting before Thanksgiving. I I wish all of you a a happy and healthy Thanksgiving, everyone here. Uh, to our our general community, we have a lot to be thankful for. Uh, and I'm not gonna go into all of that right now, but I'm thankful for the work we have ahead of us and the work that we have behind us. And I hope you all have a great holiday. Thank you.
Next, we have the student report.
Uh, hello, my name is Madison Brochus and I'm a senior. I am the student representative from the High School Student Council and I'm here to talk to you about uh our accomplishments in November. So to start in, starting on November twelfth, we started a food drive for Thanksgiving, which ended two days ago. Um, we collected eighty-four dollars and two hundred and fifty-seven pounds of food, which we delivered yesterday to Eden slash North Collins Food Bank. Um, we usually do that every year, but it was a pretty good turnout. Uh, and then after that, we had a Just Say Hello event, which is a program that we just started this year to sort of make students and teachers feel more comfortable talking to each other, to make the environment feel more welcoming and to make the school feel like a more like friendly place. So the event we held recently was in the cafe where they made like fall-themed bookmarks and having snacks, donuts and cider, just so that teachers could sort of talk to students and that, you know, the kids could build connections. And then um upcoming, we have a conference, which is over in Lake Placid, which we also did last year, uh, where we send a few students who go and they listen to three speakers talk about leadership. And um they do like workshop activities to sort of build leadership and learn what a leadership role is and how they can be a part of it. Um, I haven't gone, but I have heard from a lot of people that it's very effective and that the speakers are very intelligent and they know what they're talking about and that um they do learn a lot about leadership from those. So that is all, yeah.
Thanks. And uh, any personal information you want to share or something about a dream school?
Um, well, I can say that I feel like this year the Student Council definitely has a lot more verbal students, so we're getting a lot more done and we're talking a lot more about how we can better the like environment of our school.
What did you tell me before the meeting? Your great news.
Oh, my great?
Yes.
Oh, I got into my dream college recently, so that was nice.
Which is?
R I T.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
What do you, what do you plan on studying?
Uh, chemical engineering. Thank you.
Very impressive. Thank you.
I actually just know of someone who graduated from R I T in chemical engineer and got a great job, so good choice. Next, we have Board Report Roundtable.
So I was able to attend the regionalization meeting of BOSIs. Um, myself and Mrs. Gregory. It was, it was rather interesting. Um, one of the things we did is we all kind of put on this app what our, what's it called again, Jeff?
Thought Exchange.
Thought Exchange. So what we put like what our major concerns was about regionalization. And one of the biggest questions that came up, so it was, it was the board president and superintendent were in attendance. So at our table, it was uh Eden, uh East Aurora and Clarence. So, you know, three different types of school districts to to talk about. And then we had to put our thoughts into this thought exchange app. And then it was kind of like a social media thing where you actually like liked it. So it would take, there was, I want to say there's probably forty ideas that were out there and the biggest ones kind of came to the top with the ones with the highest stars. And, you know, just a lot of good ideas in regards to, you know, what we could do. But the biggest thing that came up was the one group that wasn't there was the teachers' union. So, so like regionalization, one thing that was talked about was like, if we could offer, you know, let's say whatever class that we don't offer to Eden, but we, it could be taught um synchronously or distance learning from somebody else. So let's say you had a group of, let's say, Eden, North Collins, Springville, East Aurora, and then say like the teacher in East Aurora was was teaching it. So the question is, how do you match up bell schedules? And then next thing, how do you match up is is who, you know, basically leads that and who gets credited for for the class? Um, all that was positive, but with the the thing that kind of came out was, you know, where's the unions when we start talking about this? So the biggest one that came out was to say, well, there's just one union, one teachers' union. And all of us basically said, no, there's seven hundred unions within New York State. So just some real good things. Um, I know we're working on on some deadlines that we need to to hit in January and I think there'll be another meeting then. Um, but the other thing that got brought up was the uh the two initiatives that are kind of going down the track at the same time with the the Blue Ribbon Commission and regionalization at the same time. They're curious how they're gonna cross that. But for an hour and forty-five minutes um before happy hour on Friday, it was, it was actually a very good meeting. Um, and just the only other thing, uh, we do have a Capitol Project uh meeting uh Tuesday at nine A M. To kind of finalize the the final things. Barb, when are we mailing? Okay. 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 Just because the seventeenth is kind of creeping up pretty quick.
We're exactly on the timeframe that we committed to.
Right. That's all I got.
The Capitol Project Community Meeting is Thursday, December twelfth, twenty twenty four at six P M. at the Middle High School Library. The Capitol Project Vote is Tuesday, December seventeenth, twenty twenty four, nine A M. to nine P M. in the middle school, high school auditorium foyer. The next regular Board of Ed meeting is Wednesday, December eighteenth, twenty twenty four at six P M. in the middle school, high school library. That's a full week. And that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Ed enter executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming, everybody.